Night study session for Prairie Lake Savage Area Schools on February 27th. We have everyone here except Enrique Velasquez will be here soon. He's running a little bit late. I'll hand it off to Dr. Thomas for our purpose and agenda.
Thank you Chair Crosby, Board of Directors, and this evening we have our study session for the board. It's our opportunity to engage with our board and community to take a deeper dive at some of our content and topics. And a lot of these are for your informational purposes, to ask questions, get clarity. And a lot of these will come forward for your consideration for votes in the future as well. So tonight, we'll go through our annual program staffing reductions discussion. We have a conversation around Kids Company and some programmatic time extensions and rates to reflect that, our achievement and integration three-year plan. And then lastly, our rehabilitation projects, primarily our pavement projects that we'll talk about, which we'll then call for a business session later on. And then I should say lastly, then our proclamation for School Social Workers Week. So that is the content that we'll be covering with the board tonight.
Thank you. And we always reference our board working document when we're looking at our topics for the study session. So tonight, it's district policy. We're looking at some policies that are remaining from our 21-22 cycle. And under operational oversight, our preliminary budget discussion for 23-24, and then monthly enrollment updates as well. So we will start with 23-24 program and staffing reductions additions discussion. It's an update only, no board action is requested. And Executive Director of Business Services, Fredrickson, and Executive Director of Administrative Services, Herman, are going to lead us in that discussion tonight.
Crosby Superintendent.
We are in the process of doing our review of our current staffing and programming. We are going to be meeting with, at once with our elementary principals. We'll be meeting with them again next week. We're finalizing the enrollment numbers. We're looking at the open enrollment and where requests have been, and making sure that we have those included in all of our staffing discussions. And then we also are looking mostly at what the legislature's doing. Make sure that any increases in the formula allowance, we're also including in our budget planning. But we are moving along in that direction. So there'll be more to come in the next couple of weeks.
And just to add to that quickly, a really exciting new development from Teaching and Learning, also working with Cardonics as a vendor to help with registration at the secondary level, which will help streamline our efficiencies around staffing at the secondary level, which has been great to work with, continuing meetings with them. So appreciate the partnership with Teaching and Learning on that as well. And just working through all of those factors that impact staffing with enrollment registrations, open enrollment, looking at special education numbers, EL numbers, speech supports, and gathering all that information so we can make the best educated decisions moving forward with the optimal goal to move staffing timelines up this year because we'll be going to the Minnesota Educator Job Fair March 30th with our goal to be able to openly promote for positions for next year at that job fair.
Questions or comments from the board? Kind of a high-level update. We'll get more next, at the next meeting as well.
Yeah.
What is Cardonics?
Dr. Edwards can come up and speak to it at more length. Cardonics is a vendor opportunity that takes our staffing along with secondary registrations to help us inform where FTEs and sections need to go based off of the registrations from our secondary students.
So, yes, exactly. And it works in conjunction with Infinite Campus. Our, that's where our students register. Currently, they're engaged in that work, have been for the last couple of weeks at the secondary level. Throughout this week and into next, our high school and middle school administrative team, along with their counselors, will be working to clean up that data, make sure they have all of that information in. And then, moving forward, Cardonics, once that information is in, it will be loaded into, from Infinite Campus into Cardonics. It's a schedule building tool that helps us identify what the most effective and efficient scheduling we can do to meet the needs of the requests and the staffing that we have available to us. So it's intended to be a effective, an efficient, more effective and efficient process that we will engage in moving forward to build the master schedule at the secondary level.
That's great. So it's going to do load balancing and across, okay.
Yep.
Good. Because that's desperately needed.
Yep.
Yeah. Did we do it manually before?
We, yeah, we've used the tools within Infinite Campus before.
Yeah.
And exclusively. And this is a tool that helps to do that more effectively and efficiently.
Yeah. Great. Other questions? Thank you for that update. Thanks for helping answer the questions for us. We'll roll right on to Kids Company and Summer Programming Update with Director of Community Ed Services, Joel Dahl.
Good evening Board Chair Crosby and Board Directors. Thank you for an opportunity to share a few updates from our Community Education Department this evening. The main priority to discuss is an increase for our Kids Company rates for the 23-24 school year. And this is specific to our preschool-age childcare program. There should have been a document in your packet that shows a side-by-side comparison of last year's rates to what our proposal is for this year, or this coming school year. And really, the only one that's changing our, is our Laker preschool childcare rates for the five-day program, which was $1,040 last year, and it's increasing to $1,150 a month this year. So it's an increase of $110 a month. And the reason for this increase is that we are, we're changing the program back to our original hours that we offered prior to the COVID pandemic. During the pandemic, hours were reduced to 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and we're now going back to 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And so with that change, there is an increase in staffing costs, and so we're going to increase those rates slightly to help offset that. You will notice that in the summer program, we're also changing the hours back to the 6:30 to 6:00 timeframe. However, last year, we had a larger increase in our fees for the summer program to help align us with other districts in our area. And so we didn't feel the need to increase the fees for summer. So this will take effect starting with the 23-24 school year. In addition to that, we are also adding a new program this next school year. It's called our Lakers Threes Program. It's for three-year-olds only, and it's a new five-day-a-week care program for threes. So if they are not ready to register or enroll in a preschool program, they can still sign up for our Kids Company childcare at three and basically receive full day care five days a week. So that's a new program. We had a lot of families asking about that in the past, and so we decided to add that in this year. The rate for that program is exactly the same as our preschool-age childcare program, the $1,150 a month. Are there any questions on the rates before I go into some other updates?
I have a question for you. When was the last time the rates were increased? I want to make, I want to say it was even just last school year?
There, there was a change. It actually didn't increase because we reduced the number of hours a few years ago. There was, there was some changes there. I don't believe that they up or increased the preschool age fees. They increased the school age care fees. So this is only for our preschool age care.
Okay, that's what I was thinking of. Thank you.
It also looks like you eliminated the two-day schedule.
Yes. So, under the preschool age care, we are down to a five-day-only schedule where families would register and they would attend the five days. And so, the biggest reason for that is our staffing. When we open it up and we try to staff these programs based on, you know, summer registering for two days or three days, it gets really challenging. And so, a lot of programs across the state are going to the five-day program where, so like if you're only registered for three days of preschool, you would still have full day care on those days when you don't have preschool. And then on the days that you do have preschool, you still get your half-day care as well as the before and after care. So it's, the only option will be the five-day option, and that's what most programs across the state are going to now, just because of staffing needs.
Question?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
So with, with all the increases with inflation, labor costs, how are you able to hold costs within the current environment?
When they increased the fees last year, like specifically to the summer program to align us with where other districts were, that actually gave us a pretty good increase to where we were able to cover our costs based on, on that increase. So even adding the additional time now for summer, it'll, it'll decrease what we're, our revenues a little bit, but we still will come out ahead just looking at our enrollment numbers. So, and our enrollments for this summer are already where we were last summer, and will likely exceed that. I think we still have registrations that are coming in. So, we were able to offset based on the, because we did a, I don't know the exact amount, but a fairly larger increase last summer, again, which was just an alignment increase, and that will help cover our costs for the summer. So it's only specific to the school year where we're having to increase those fees slightly. I'll give a couple other just brief updates on summer programming. We have a new program we're starting that'll, we're going to kick off here in April. It's called our Laker Learners Tutoring Program. And one of the things that I found when I moved to this district was that we didn't have an organized and structured tutoring program for students. It was kind of all over the board. Some teachers were doing some tutoring on their own, others were looking at private companies. And so we are pulling together a new tutoring program where we met with teachers from each of the buildings. And this is only for K through eight right now. We're not doing anything at the high school level. That could be an addition later. But we're working with district teachers to offer tutoring services for our students. This would be a school year as well as summer program. The teachers sign up to tutor through us, and then families can register for the tutoring services. And basically, it's, we match them up with a teacher who is certified to work in whatever area it is that they need tutoring in. They work out their own schedule, when they want to meet. The only requirement is, is that they meet on district property, just for liability. So it can't be something where they're meeting with them at their home or in another public space. It has to be on district property. And so we are just going to be opening up the registration for that in April, now that we have a fairly decent list of teachers who have now signed up to become tutors. So we're excited to get that going and really help support students with learning loss through COVID, or whatever else it may have been, and then continue that on through the summer. So that's a new program that's going to be starting here in April. A couple other updates for summer. We opened registration on January 27th. Enrollment has been really strong already to this point. I think we have just shy of 1,000 enrollments for summer programming already. Programs will run June 6th through August 18th. We, we're offering 255 different youth camps this summer, and we will be adding a few more yet. We'll be doing a secondary, the backpack catalog, as we call it, that will go out in May with some additional programs that we didn't have set up yet by the time our catalog went to print. We're offering 39 new courses this summer for youth, and we're offering 45 different adult courses over the summer. And this one always surprises me, but backed by popular demand is goat yoga. Can't even imagine doing that, but it's a very popular class, and so we're bringing that one back this summer. In addition to a few other new exciting classes like Spanish in the Kitchen, to name a, Basic Candy, and some adult pottery, and some other courses as well. One of the biggest changes, though, and the impact that we're going to see this summer is, due to the road closure on Fish Point Road between Hidden and Twin, we were not able to offer our summer swimming program. And that's going to be quite the hit to our program. In addition to hopefully not losing a lot of students and staff to other programs because they're going to be looking for their options this summer, our hope is that they'll come back to us next summer when we're off, able to offer that again. But because that road is going to be closed, there won't be access to either of those buildings without crossing through fields and everything else. And we just didn't feel like that was a good choice or safe for families and students. And because of the road closure, I believe there's going to be some work being done inside the two middle schools, which will affect at times. There will be no electricity, no running water, work that they can do now because there won't be any programming happening in those two buildings. So we unfortunately aren't able to offer our summer swim program. We did reach out and meet with the River Valley YMCA, which is now closed. They have a very nice aquatic facility there. We reached out to see if there was any chance that we might be able to either lease space from them or partner with them to be able to provide some kind of summer swim program. Unfortunately, the cost of trying to lease out that space, because we would have been the only renters in there, was, was too high for us to be able to justify trying to offer that. So we, we may be able to partner with them down the road, depending on what happens with that facility, but for the summer, we weren't able to accomplish that. So those are just a couple of quick updates on our summer programs. We're excited about some new classes that are coming out. And I don't know if any of you were able to attend or check it out, but we just had our Dance With Me Ball this last Saturday at the high school. We had about 560 enrollments for that, so it was a great event, a lot of fun. It's always fun seeing the, the girls get out and dance. We had our, our high school princesses came in, and they had our costumes on, and so we got a lot of great photos. And it's fun to see those community-type events outside of just our regular courses that are offered on a daily basis. So, that's a quick update on our summer program, and then on our rates increase for kids' call. Any other questions for me?
On the, the summer tutoring program, is that for credit recovery? Is there an, is there a class that they follow? How does that work?
So there isn't yet. We haven't gone to the high school level with the tutoring, so this will specifically just be for our K through eight students. And it's really just a, if they're struggling in a subject area, to help provide them some extra support. It's not a credit recovery or a catch-up, like our targeted services or anything like that. It is, it's simply tutoring for students who are struggling in certain subject areas. It could grow into something more, but this is a start, at least, to get an organized and structured program going.
So do kids have to qualify for it, or can anyone show up?
Anybody can register for it. Yep. It's, unlike targeted services and some of those other programs, we don't receive any funding for this, where that comes with requirements in order to meet that. And because this is open to anyone and everyone, there is a fee associated with it, but it's a much smaller fee than if you were to go to a private tutoring program or something like that. And the majority of the fee just goes back to the instructor's time that they're spent with the student.
I'm not sure how it works in middle school, but let's say a sixth grader failed math or something like that needs to retake it again, or is that part of this thing? That's what I meant kind of by credit?
Sure. Yeah, we haven't gotten into that yet. That's certainly something down the road that we can have some discussions with our principals. The biggest thing for us is making sure that we have the staff to be able to accommodate that. I believe we have seven teachers who registered now to be tutors. And if we start seeing a huge influx or adding things like that into it, we would need to reach out. I believe we only have one right now from the middle school level that signed up to tutor. Not to say that our elementary teachers couldn't tutor that, that some of them are licensed all the way up through eighth grade, so they could certainly do some of that as well. But we try to find a good match for whatever the student's area is that they are struggling in, to be able to provide them those services. So, there's definitely some room for growth in this. We just really wanted to get something started for, for students who are struggling right now, and we can help kind of support them in that.
Registration starts in April. So for this, so is it a list of options for families to choose from, or can any family come, come to you and say, I have a, a child who's struggling here or there?
Yep.
And then you just kind of customize tutoring around it?
Yep. So they'll fill out the registration form, and in there, it will ask them for the subject area that they're struggling in. You know, it could be multiple areas. They fill all of that out, and then they put in days and times that they are available for tutoring. Could be before school, after school. We're also doing some weekends or evening. We didn't do weekends yet because that gets a little tricky. They give us that, and then we match it up with tutors who are, one can service their subject area and that are available on the days and times that they're looking for. And initially, they would sign up for three sessions that they would meet, three hour-long sessions of tutoring. And then they can sign up for individual sessions after that if they need more support or help. So it's, it's really just a, a quick catch-up on, you know, if you're struggling in math, let's go through this. Let's help see where the concerns are, the issues are. Maybe we can give you that extra support to get you over that. And then if they need to extend that, they certainly can do that. It's also going to be a key, I think, for our summer, where, you know, it gives students an opportunity to do some catching up or supporting so that they don't fall behind if they're already falling behind and they didn't qualify for targeted services. This would be another option for students and families, because it's really based on when they're available to do it, the areas that they're struggling in, and then we'll match them up with someone who's certified to help support them in that.
You could have one tutor helping multiple
Correct.
Students in different areas.
Yep.
Depending on the response that you get?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
And will the tutor program be open to English learners as well? Like, do you have the staff to support that?
We actually, we're working on that. Sam and I had a conversation actually earlier last week before the snow came. We are looking at applying actually for, there's a program called AmeriCorps where you get students or will come out and help support. And they started one this year with EL background. And so that, that's where we're going to start with this. But again, it's one of those things where we would need the staff who are qualified to be able to provide that, but that's certainly something that we want to be able to do. And so we're hoping this will kick it off for the summer, if we can get this individual in, help, help provide support for our EL students, and then we'll hopefully get a staff member on that can do that and continue it on.
And is there support for students of need, or like scholarship programs?
There, there is. Yep, yep. So we provide, well, we, we call it reduced fee. We don't call it scholarships. We do provide reduced fees for families who qualify. We have our own sort of criteria, which is similar to like your free and reduce type criteria, where we can provide discounts for programs. And tutoring would certainly be one of those that we would want to help support families in.
Great. Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you for all of your support, and obviously for supporting lifelong learning in our district. Thank you.
And we might have to try goat yoga.
There you go.
Right. Thanks again. Okay. We are going to get an update from Director of Equity and Inclusion, Director Oak, on our annual achievement and integration plan. Do you want to do an introduction at all, Dr. Thomas?
Sure. So, just for context, several years ago, when we first started receiving the A&amp;I grant from the state, it was probably somewhere in the $18,000, $20,000 range. And this was a grant that was put onto our consent agenda and just passed every three years, you know, with, with the board. But since the start of this grant, we have grown our program to supporting a programmatic budget of nearly $800,000. And, and again, in the spirit of fiscal transparency, this is something that we are really focusing on here. Having this on the consent agenda without discussion is something that we were just not going to do at that, at that budget level. So tonight, Director Oak will walk us through how the program has evolved over the years, what our current allocations are, how those resources are spent, and how our students are being supported through this A&amp;I grant, as well as our partnerships with several other districts too, in our region. So with that, I will turn it over to Director Oak.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Crosby. My name is the Board Superintendent Dr. Michael Thomas. Thank you for the opportunity to share the Achievement Integration Plan tonight here. I'll start off very, the presentation will be very brief here, and mostly around the purpose of the Achievement Integration Grant, why we, we get the grant, and also, like Dr. Thomas said, highlight the growth that we've had over the years here, and then go into some of the goals that we have in terms of creating our program here. So, basically, the purpose of the Achievement Integration Grant here is to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and reduce academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds in the Minnesota Public Schools. And I pulled this right off the MDE website there with the guiding statutes that, that ties to it. And basically, why Prairie Lake Savage Area Schools get the grant is because we are an adjoining district. We are next to Shakpe, which has 20% higher in students of color compared to other districts around them, primarily Jordan and Prairie Lake Savage Area Schools. In, in just recent times here, Lakeville has also became a racially isolated district as well, and they've also reached out to us as, as possible partnerships also. But we are the adjoining district there. We do not have any iracial identifiable schools at the moment here, and a racial identifiable school is very similar to a racially isolated district. That's when 20% more of the student population at that school is higher than the, the district average. Districts can also volunteer to, to be part of the Achievement Integration Grant too, but they have to go through a process of MDE to, to qualify them for, for the grant there. Like Dr. Thomas stated, when we started with this grant here, we were very, very small in terms of the dollar amount that we got. We only leveraged around $14,000 at the beginning there. But within just one year, you saw the jump there from $14,000 to around $400,000 there. And right now, with the growth of the percentage of our students of color in our district here, we are operating at about $800,000 for the year. So every goal that we write in the Achievement Integration Plan has to align with, with these three areas here. And, and basically, in short, it's to reduce academic achievement for the, the targeted students, reduce equitable access to more diverse and effective teachers as well for the particular students that are of concern, and also increase the racial and economic integration. Much of, of the work that we do here is in our district, but also in collaboration with our partner district, Jordan and Shakpe. And we do that activity through, we do that through the activity called Caring and Committed Conversations. And that highlights the, the goal there, number three, of increasing racial and economic integration. Every three years, we have to submit a new plan to MDE, which is due March 15th. And that's why you all will be taking up the vote there on March 13th as well, so that we'll be ready to submit the grant there on March 15th. The budget, though, is done every year. As you can see, what I have on my slides here, we'll talk about the 2024 budget plan, and then in 2025, we, we will put together another budget for that as well. So we have six goals that we operate under here in Prairie Lake Savage Area Schools. The first goal is our collaborative goal. It is tied to the, one of the targets there of integration for the Achievement Integration Grant. And that is, is through the activities of our Caring and Committed Conversations. And our goal there is based on a survey that we give to students as a baseline at the beginning, and then also after our Caring and Committed Conversations, to see if their comfort level has increased in the following areas that are listed there. Self-confidence, social emotional skills, elevating their voice, advocacy for change, leadership skills, and connectedness to school. Our second goal has to do with the average attendance of our American Indian students, increasing that from 72.4% to 80% by 2026. This is also, it's a similar goal to what we had last year. However, we measured it a little bit differently. Three years ago, we looked at decreasing the number of absences, days absence, from six days to, to three days here. But today, we're, we've decided to look at this going forward, we decided to look at full days, because sometimes students are gone for part of the period, but they are also there for, for the rest of the time as well. So we want to take that into consideration also. The four-year graduation of both Black and Hispanic students increased from 81.8% to 86%. Three years ago, we saw a gap in our, our Black student graduation. It was down around 60%, and our goal was to decrease it to 80%, which we achieved. This year, the two-year student groups This year, the two year student groups that are, have a lower graduation rate are our Black students and our Hispanic students, which are at eighty-one point eight percent, and we're hoping to increase that to eighty-six percent by 2026. The other three goals that we have, we do not have a, much of a disparity, disproportionality in our AP courses. So we, we're hoping to maintain that. That is something that we, we are doing well for students across the board there is that providing that access to AP courses. We would like to continue to increase the access to MINT caps for our students. Three years ago, we identified these goals as students that comes from families that are economically challenged. This year, with some of the changes in, in free and reduced price lunch categories and all that stuff that are happening at the state level, we've identified that as at-risk categories now, which also include English learners, students who are from families that are economically challenged, and other areas of at-risk as well. Goal number five, PLSAS students across the district will have access to culturally relevant curriculum and pedagogy. A hundred percent of teachers will be trained in this here. We have been working on this for the past few years here with culturally and linguistically relevant teaching and learning. We are looking to continue this work here with a partnership through World Savvy, who focuses on global studies and culture for our students here and also for our, that understanding of that global, you know, connectedness in, in, in our students and, and our world here. And World Savvy is a, is a organization that has worked and partnered with schools across the state here on that. And then this is something that we've done very well this year here is engage our parents in our top five language groups outside of English, and that is our Russian families, our Spanish families, our Somali families, our Vietnamese family, and our Cambodian family. And we're hoping to continue that. We're going into next year there to ensure that we, we get their feedback and bring them along the way as partners in, in terms of meeting the needs of their students there. So to achieve that, that goal, these are the things that we are funding in the Achievement and Integration Grant there. These are the positions that come out of that. We are looking to increase our Spanish liaison and a Somali liaison. Right now, our Spanish-speaking liaison is paid out of Title III, which is funding that, that supports our English learner students there. So we're looking to add one here in Achievement Integration and also add an additional East African liaison as well. And then we're also looking to add a Vietnamese liaison and Russian-speaking liaison. Because of our growth in our Ukrainian families who are also Russian speakers there, this will help support their needs also. And addressing the, our Vietnamese students and our Vietnamese family have been a gap, a gap for many years here, and, and having a liaison in that community will help us do the engagement in that community much better. As you see there, the, the Kamai liaison or Cambodian liaison is not posted there. I'll take that upon myself here to help provide that engagement and support to, to, to that community, along of course with our, our team across the district there. Part of our American Indian salary is, is paid out of Achievement and Integration as well, our American Indian Coordinator's salary. And then some of the activities there that, that will help us achieve our goals are listed below also. So with, with the, with the positions that we are, are supporting out of this grant here, we are, are looking to encourage student engagement, address the achievement gap and opportunity gap of our students, encourage family involvement, and enhance cultural relevance practices in our staff, and promote integration. And these are all what the purpose of the Achievement Integration Grant are, are, is provided for, our Achievement Integration funding. That's all I have. Any questions?
Yes. A few. Sam, thank you. So we submit a plan every three years. So forgive me, where do we fall in that three years right now? Are we at the beginning of our three-year cycle?
Yep. So fiscal year twenty-four will be the, the first year of the next three-year cycle there. So we're at the end right now of our, our three-year cycle.
Okay. Thank you. And then districts have to qualify for this. So does this mean we kind of undergo another qualification? Or we're set with that? Because I imagine that changes all the time for districts too.
Well, some districts get their identification changed, like Lakeville wasn't an adjoining district to Burnswee, and now they're a racially isolated district themselves. We, we will continue to get this funding here as long as Shakopee stays a racially isolated district, and we're the adjoining district to, to Shakopee there. So our qualification is, is, is basically set right now for the foreseeable future.
Okay. And then Equometrics. Can you please explain more of what that is?
So Equometrics analyzes, it's through a survey base and it analyzes some of the gap areas where we have it in terms of equity work, whether it's diversity, whether it's culturally relevant practices, addressing staff needs and all that there. There's, there's, there's a, a list of about eight areas where Equometrics will be gauging through surveys of areas where we're strong at in terms of equity work and areas where we're weak at. We feel that it's very important to have that data so that we can continue to develop and, and align our work to, to see whether or not we're making growth in the areas of equity.
I have a few more, but I'll turn it over. I don't want to hog the time.
I can, I can piggyback on your question. I have, I have a few questions too, but I'll, I'll do the same. I'll just ask a question, a couple, and then we'll pass on. We're gonna, we're gonna be up here for a while, Sam, okay? So how is Equometrics different than the, the surveys that we're currently doing? And could the current, the surveys that we're currently doing, using, fill that void? And then could we potentially use that money for something else within your plan?
Well, right now, Equometrics is solely based on equity work there and analyzing, I believe, is about eight areas of, of different equity work. So it gets deep down in that. And I, I, I feel the importance of, of the data from Equity, Equometrics will allow us to write skip plans that will align to the specific needs of each of the buildings there, whereas some of our survey data are not necessarily targeted towards the areas of equity, but more broadly general in terms of how we are doing as a district.
I'll just add, if I may. One of the things I asked when I first started here was how are we measuring the efficacy of the work around equity in our district? And I think there are some aspects, Director Atkinson, that you bring up around some of the survey data that will speak to some of the lived experiences in our, in our district. But Equometrics will provide a research base around the work of equity, around eight key areas and domains that allow us to look at where we have strong alignment and where we may not have strong alignment. And it allows us then to target as a district as well as then as individual schools, because they'll disaggregate it at the school level as well as at a district level. So as Director Oak mentioned, when a school is writing their school improvement plan, they know the researched area domain that they might be most misaligned, and that's where they'll target their resources and support. So it gives us a research base behind the work versus more of the qualitative experiences of, of equity. It actually gets into the quantitative measurements of equity.
So a third party will conduct that, correct?
Third-party entity, correct.
Yeah. And we've identified who that is or not quite yet?
Orgometrics is the parent company
Got it.
That we would be partnering with, and they do systemic strategic alignment inventories as well as inventory specifically around equity work.
So is this similar to the equity survey that we did back several years ago? Or, and, and would this survey be going out to every buddy in the district? Or is it targeted on certain students?
I'm not aware of the equity survey we did several years ago. I'm not either.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
This is a new Equometric. We haven't worked with them before.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
So when I first got on the board, there was a statewide Health and Human Services survey that went out. And it actually went out, I believe, nationwide, and that's what made Minnesota ranked fiftieth out of fifty, by the way, the results of that on our gap. And hence, the legislative action, the funding for A&amp;I, things like that, kind of came out of that from what I understand. And then we've done other surveys where this has been part of it, but not necessarily the sole focus by any stretch of the imagination. And a lot of those did come out of the annual survey or the Health and Human Services-supported survey. So I'm not quite sure what's meant by an equity survey, but that was my understanding in history from 2016 forward.
This survey will be given to staff?
Just to staff?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Not to students?
Not to students, no.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I wasn't clear on that. So thank you. I have another question about the funding. So I was reading the Minnesota Statute 124D point eight six two that you put the link up there. And under subsection six for revenue use, it says that at least eighty percent of the district's achievement and integration revenue received under this section that we receive must be used for innovative and integrated learning environments, school enrollment, enrollment choices, family engagement activities, and other approved programs providing direct service to students. So that's like, that's like how it's supposed to be used. And then it says up to twenty percent of the revenue may be used for professional development. And the part that I have a question about is it says that no more than ten percent of the total amount of revenue may be spent on administrative services. So can you help me understand with all the list of all the deans and where does that fall in what's allowed under Minnesota State statute?
Yeah. So that, that talks more so to activities of, of the work there. So for the deans there, it does fall under direct student services because they'll be working with, directly with students as, as well too. And even, even for, for my part of the salary there, there's a few that, there's a, a part of it, ten percent of it, that's tied to administrative work, but there's other ten percent of it that'll be working with, directly with students and families of students and all that stuff. Hence why you see a lot of my work doing, working with Student Voices and also Family Engagement as well. So it is tied to, to activities that are aligned to directly supporting and working with students there and not just the administrative side of things. Only ten percent can be aligned to the administrative side of things. So not just the name of the position or the title of the position, but it, it is talking about the activities of work being done.
So of the, the deans, you're saying, so basically of the dean's role, that only a portion of it would be based on this program? Is that what you're saying? Or?
No, the whole, the, well, Achievement Integration itself, there eighty percent has to be tied to direct student work there and ten percent administrative. So as part of the dean's salary is paid out of the Achievement and Integration funds, that part of the salary is, is for them to be working and supporting students directly or, or students' families and all that stuff there.
Okay. Because I was looking back at like the program when it was first put in place in 2018, and they gave a lot of examples of different programs that were put into place, or different programs that they would recommend. And it's interesting that we just came off of the conversation about the summer tutoring, because for example, that would have been a program that they would have recommended is to have tutoring in the summertime for students, or even offering classes in the summertime to teach kids about different cultures. And so that's why I, you know, I, when I read this, I questioned whether or not those expenses can be included within the program. Because I, I looked at them as administrative. So. And then going back to, so you, I know we're an adjoining district and we are joined to Shakopee. So as an adjoining district, is this per program required as an adjoining district or is it recommended? Do you know? I mean, I know we qualify, but the question is, is like, is it required under statute or is it recommended?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not so sure.
So in term-
That wasn't clear. I couldn't find that in the, the-
Yeah. So in being a contiguous district to a racially isolated schools, uh, district, they have to partner with a neighboring district to help bring balance and experiences, shared experiences. And so-
Right. And Jordan is a, is a district as well.
Yep. And, and, and then as we know, now Lakeville. So do we have to be a partner? We're not forced to be a partner. This is something that we are choosing to partner with Shakopee, similar to Lakeville asking us to be a partner. So that was a conversation that Director Oak and I were having of really wanting to understand why is Lakeville looking to us to be a partner? And I'm wanting to make sure that we don't spread ourselves so thin that we'd lose the integrity of what we're trying to do and benefit our students and families from this support as well. So by, by, we're not mandated by law, but a district will ultimately have to partner with a racially isolated school system.
And for me, taking a look at this here, I do see that this is bringing the, the necessary resources needed to support our students. Without the Achievement Integration Grant, we probably wouldn't have the liaisons to be working and connecting with our families who are speaking different languages and all that. It would just be that much harder to make that connection.
Can I ask a question quick? So I noticed that it went like fourteen thousand, then four hundred. Is it a mathematical calculation?
It is. And I actually even ran this by Tammy because MDE has a, a list there that you can click on to show how many, how much money we, we can possibly qualify for, but it's, it's not exactly accurate because actually on their list, there we may be qualifying for more. But that's based on per people data that we have in our district here, along with a percentage of students of color that we have in our district as well.
I have a question, Sam. Based on some of the goals that you have for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools for the twenty, twenty-four through twenty-six school years, number two and number three specifically, you, there, you share goals on attendance for the American Indian students and also increasing the graduation rate. Those, those numbers are easily trackable, I'm assuming, graduation rates and attendance. But what kind of things have you discussed or, or have you planned to put in place to help increase those areas, if I may ask?
Yes. On, on top of, of the goals there, we do have the strategies and the key performance indicators that we need to identify to make sure that we're making targets every year. So in terms of in, in increasing American Indian students' attendance there, we want to make sure that we're able to engage with the families and offer programming that will bring students in and engage their interest in, in, in terms of being a part of our, our, our school and, and our lesson. So we, we talked about increasing our partnership with SMSC, providing field trips to our fourth grade students to bring them over there as well as bring in elders in, in the native community here into the classroom to provide, you know, opportunities for students to experience native cultures inside the classroom as well. An example of something that we are just starting to do right now is the drum and dance classes that we are offering once a month to our, our, our native families and, and students. And now that have been asked to be increased to, to twice a month now as well. And that is already showing to increase the engagement level of that. In terms of graduation rates for our, our Black and, and our Hispanic students, the key performing indicators that are tied most to their success is the attendance rate and also success in core classes. So we're looking and still working with Lynn for her to run some data for me on, on the failure rates of, in core classes for the, the two particular student population. And also looking at attendance rate for, for that particular population as well.
Thank you. Sounds like relationship is, you're focusing on relationship and, and that is, that's awesome. Thank you.
And that is also part of the reason why we're, we're looking at adding liaisons in those two areas too. The majority of our Black student population are East African students there and predominantly from our Somali-speaking community. So adding a Somali liaison in that area will certainly help a lot. And also a Spanish-speaking liaison as well to help that. Currently, right now, we have one liaison working across all the different school buildings, so it's very hard to, to make that parent connection.
Thank you.
Sam, I have a question about those two same goals that Amy mentioned, two and three, about the attendance and the graduation. So first one is, I don't know, can you explain how you can have decimal points in terms of attendance and graduation? I'm just, I'm very curious how that is. I'm sure it's based on a formula, but I'm curious. And then number two, when it comes to these numbers, are these boisterous goals? Are they, what's the benchmark? How do you come up with these numbers? I'm, I'm very fascinated by how you arrive in these numbers.
Right now, these numbers are, are pulled from EdgeClimber there, and that's what we've gotten right now. And we looked at as a baseline which population had the, the lowest number in terms of attendance there. And it was our American Indian student population at the, the rate that you had. I think it was like, what, seventy, seventy-two points?
Seventy-two point four.
Seventy-two point four.
Seventy-two point four, and that was, that was the data that was, that was averaged out there. So this is an average, um, terms of, um, full day attendance for that population. And I think that's why you have the decimal point, uh, there. And then we, we were, um, looking at attainable goals as well as, um, a, a, a goal that can, can, you know, fit and align with some of the engagement practices that we do. Um, so those are reasonable goals that we, we feel like we can attain, um, in terms of the three years that are there.
Okay.
Director Olson, I'll just, I'll share that again, when we look at like a three-year average, for example, to look at what have been our growth rates, um, over that time. And then we look at our statistical analysis to say, okay, now what would be a stretch goal from what we have seen on average? And so we try to push, you know, a stretch on that as well. So that's how you get, um, that number. The decimal comes also from, uh, when Director Ock was saying earlier, whole days versus missing an hour of a day or two hours of a day. So you have fractions of days that will, um, impact the actual percentage averages versus whole numbers to fractions of numbers.
Okay. Thank you. So Sam, um, so I appreciate the work that you're doing, and I just, I have to ask the hard question of, like, back in 2017, when I look at the World's Best Workforce Overview, we had, um, racial achievement gaps for students based on reading, and our white students were at sixty-four percent, and this is back in 2017. And our students of color were at sixty-one percent. And then over the years, as we've implemented this program, our gap has actually gotten wider. So, like, while I agree with the work that we're doing, my question is maybe like, based on, what have we done in the past? Have we really thought about what have we done in the past and how can we do things differently? To truly go back and get that, close that achievement gap, to get back to where we were in 2017 numbers. And, um, I think about the things that we've done to be able to provide transportation to the MinCaps program. I think that's incredible. I think if, if there's a way we could provide transportation to the PSEO, PSEO program, and to be able to, um, explain to kids more about the ability to receive college credits while they're in high school, and explaining to their parents in maybe a different language of the advantage of gaining college credits while you're in high school, and how that puts you ahead and helps you out as you're not having to pay for college as you enter into, you know, making, uh, you know, expensive choices. And I know you and I have talked about this. And then also, making, how do I say, um, the Sage Program? And any advanced learning, I know we have a lot of advanced learning English learning kids. And so, making them aware of the programs that we have available, and having people, I love the liaisons, I think that's great. And having these programs available so that those students can reach their highest potential would be my challenge. And so, like I said, that's the one thing that's the greatest concern to me is that this program is supposed to be focused on lowering that achievement gap, and also, it's really focused on integration. And I feel like in the last couple of years, we've done a little bit more segregation with what we've done versus integration. And that's, that's where my, where I'd like to see, um, you know, even if it's going back and looking at the goals, I think some of them that you put in place, um, are really great. But maybe taking a hard look at that and seeing what can we do differently? And then when we rewrite these goals, can you rewrite them every year based on your circumstances? Do you tweak them every year, or are they set in stone for the three years?
If, if we tweak them, we do have to get approval, um, from MDE, uh, to move forward again. I completely agree with, with, with your earlier, earlier statement there that we do have to create access to, for our students, um, across the board to some of our, of the programming that we have. And this is why we, we have in our goal there, uh, to get increased opportunities for students who are at risk for MinCaps. And I would say that, that, that you are definitely correct. Other programmings that we have here in our district too, I think these are what makes Prior Lake great. Um, I, the, the question is, does all student have that opportunity to get access to those programs? And if they don't, we have to find ways to, to, to provide them the access. And I'm, I'm all, I'm all for that. Um, the only thing that I, I would say in terms of the data there from 2017 to now, I think we may be looking at different students as well too, because there are increased, um, um, you know, student, percentage of students of color, um, which, you know, may, may be also coming from different districts also. Um, so our, our, our different, our district population back from 2017 to now are, are probably looking at different students. Even though, you know, it may be classified as black students, Asian students, and, and those student, um, um, groups there, uh, the, the students that are coming in to our district might not be all coming in with the same needs as they were in, in 2017.
Yeah, and I looked at that too, which is interesting. So I pulled a report, and I, I can share this with you, but back in two thousand and eighteen, and this was just looking at MCA data, um, we had ninety-eight black students who participated in the math MCA. And they, in math, they were at fifty-three point eight percent, and that was in 2018. And then in 2022, we had eighty that participated, and their score was twenty-seven point seven percent. And I, granted, there's COVID and all that thrown in there, but the difference between, you know, like I said, so I was surprised, I was shocked actually, the number was the same. Because I know our, I, our demographics have changed. So it's definitely something to look into, as far as-
Yeah, I mean, we, we certainly can go on, uh, for a long time and then talking about data there, um, because there are, are very many ways, different ways to look at it. And as we just look at simply the percent of diversity we have in our district here compared to a, a few years ago, you see that, um, as a rise as well.
I, I would also add, I mean, that data's from 2017, 2018. We started this in 2020 with just under fourteen thousand dollars. I mean, I think your point wa- is well taken. However, you know, only in 2022 are we up at eight hundred thousand. It takes time for those things to come to work and to see them through fruition and, um, throw the COVID factor in there, which you totally acknowledged. Um, but I think it takes time, and I think we're on the right path. In the fine print of your proposal, you do talk about translators and access to classes, AP and others. So, I think the plan for addressing, um, you know, groups of kids who maybe haven't felt that they've had access, I think it's a good plan. Uh, does anyone have any other questions or feedback they want to add?
I just wanted to, one last thing, you mentioned relationships. Like, I look at this budget, and I look at the largest dollars spent, and I see it as people, and people in our buildings. And so, pure and simple, that's how relationships are built, and we all know it. If we, if teachers are our priorities, this is support for teachers. So, I appreciate the work.
Um, I, I, I'm not in a, I've sat in the, um, Curriculum and Learning Committee for some time and remember seeing our internal numbers and the numbers we worked with in 2017, and the gap was much greater than five percent. Um, and MCAs, we do have an issue with people even showing up.
Yep.
Uh, taking them, so that's one of the reasons why we don't usually use, um, those numbers necessarily to judge the gap. And that certainly isn't what was used in, uh, 2017 and 2018 when the National Report came out. It was, and of course, it's going to vary by grade level. But, uh, the one thing that I, I wanted to qualify is that obviously, and, and, and I believe other board members, uh, brought it up very, very well, but I wanted to qualify a few things. When we talk about absences and we talk about participation in, uh, certain types of programs and overall grades and graduation rates and things like that, is equometrics and all that going to help us pinpoint the why? Obviously, engagement is a large portion of it, but there's so many other factors that go into this that would, that really need to inform the whole equation here.
I, I, I believe so, I mean, like, like what Dr. Thomas have stated, um, this brings in the quantitative measures to some of the qualitative, uh, work that, that we are, we are doing. So having both, I think will allow us to hone in on, on the why and certain areas we're, we're doing well, and also certain areas where, where we're needing to, to put our attention to, to improve as well.
Yeah, I, I would say, Director France, um, that equometrics would give us the domains in which we should be looking. The why is going to be our staff. Um, we know our kids, we have the relationships with our students, our principals, they're building instructional leadership teams. If they know this is the area you need to focus in, now you craft the why. I mean, they can co-construct that with us, but as an external entity, I wouldn't let any third-party person say, this is what you'll do, because it's so unique to us. So, um, they'll just guide us to where we need to focus so that we can maximize the return on the dollars that we're spending. You know, and, and give us some ways to be able to measure it differently than just point-in-time measures.
And, and in that light, I, I'm glad for that because I know that the first two or three objectives, uh, a large percentage of our measurement is based upon the survey. And, um, I'm not a fan of surveys using that to guide or inform holistically, simply because, um, people, you know, based upon how the surveys, you know, worded, based upon what happened that day the person takes the survey, et cetera. There's so many variables that can go into that. I understand how that could measure engagement, but I'd much rather have, um, a little bit more prescriptive formula uh, coming out of this of our learning. And I, and I would anticipate that as we learn more, we would enhance the program year after year. We wouldn't just stick with something for three years. We would actually grow with it and expect another report to see how, you know, the first year under this program actually, um, proceeded and what changes would be recommended based upon our learning.
Yeah, uh, Director France, I would say yes, uh, and add just two things. One, uh, you know, being part of a national measure on, on equometrics, they certainly will have some practices that they'll be able to share that they've seen across multiple districts throughout the country that they've worked with. Um, and to Director Atkinson's point, um, you know, when we submit this budget, uh, if we see that the strategy or the goal, or I would say the strategy really isn't getting us the return, then absolutely, I think we would be open to amending and resubmitting, um, particularly if we're seeing we're not getting the traction, um, in terms of the, the, the outcomes as the goal was stating. So I think both are worthy of discussion and, and validate both your, your points.
Every, every year, we do have to report whether or not we're on track for progress, uh, to MDE there. And I think this is partly why they want us to submit a budget every year too versus having a budget for, for all three years there, because then we can make adjustments in there as well too, based on, on where we're at with, with our, our progress towards goals.
And then just one other thing about integration, because the reading that I've done in this program is really truly like, how do you integrate these kids, um, together, right? And one thing that I read about was making sure they know about extracurricular activities and have access and feel welcome to participating in extracurricular activities so that they become a part of,
Yep.
you know, being with, with other kids and learning how to be together. And then, um, really truly like building authentic relationships between the students.
And, and that's, that's where I, I would say, you know, I do see this plan, uh, plan as leading us towards integration and not segregating us. I mean, all the things that we're doing with the, um, the family engage here, engagement, um, pieces here are informing them about all those opportunities. How do you get your students into Sage and the testing that, that would qualify students there? We've, um, had a plan, um, but, but it got snowed out, uh, to bring in, uh, the, the, uh, the Activities, um, um, uh, Department to talk to our families about how can they get involved, uh, their kids involved in activities and, and what are the scholarships, uh, that are available if, um, you're struggling to, to, um, you know, pay into those things. Uh, last time, we, we talked about, um, enrollment in kindergarten and all the, uh, um, early childhood opportunities that, that families have as well. So we are the integrated part of this here, um, and how we're increasing integration and where, is we're making this information more available to families, all our families in, in our district here.
And do you work with other districts to look at like what they're doing as far as? Because some of the ideas that I pulled up was, one other district, um, worked with students to develop a personalized learning plan. And that was something that they did within, I believe it was ninth grade. All the kids within one of their classes had to develop a personalized learning plan. So that was just one idea. And then another idea that came out was called the Project E3. And it was a class where, um, it was environmental engineering for everyone. It's an inter-district Saturday, Sunday, uh, Saturday summer program focused on math and science enrichment. So again, putting it into the, um, the summer education program where kids have an opportunity to learn about, about different things that they're not maybe necessarily getting in the school district.
Our, our partner districts have been very supportive, um, and, and, you know, my, with, with my luck of being in three different districts as well too. I still keep the, the connections with those districts also, who are also Achievement and Integration districts. And we share ideas. Um, prior to, to us starting this journey of putting this plan together, um, MDE actually pulled all, all our districts together, and we were sharing ideas and, and innovations that we were doing, uh, within our districts as well too. And everybody actually was, was very quite intrigued, um, at our caring and committed conversations and the work that we're doing there and how we're able to empower Student Voice in such a way that really connects them to, to, you know, um, the, the daily improvements of the schools.
Yeah, and I think with the caring and committed conversations, because that's, how many students participate in that?
It, it's done differently at different levels. Um, you know, some elementaries have done it in, in their classroom, so they reaches all the students in the class. Um, some have, have pulled, um, a targeted group of students, and then they change it, um, every time. Uh, so it's done, it's done differently, uh, for different people. And it's different as well when we do it as a collaborative districts versus we do it, um, at our building level. When we do it at our building level, um, especially in the secondary there, it is open to all during, during Laker time there for, for students to come in and take part.
One more question. So I look at this as our achievement and integration plan, not just yours, not just Dr. Thomas's, not just the district's. I, I look at this as our achievement and integration plan. And to that end, when we talk about, you know, the training, um, that staff and teachers might get through this world savvy, do I have that correct?
Yep.
Is there an opportunity, and not necessarily to answer now, Sam, but is there an opportunity to open that to other groups like the school PTCs? Um, the booster clubs, um, you know, the people who run, you know, the different, um, you know, clubs after school, extracurriculars, things like that, to open that up to, I get, training, for lack of a better word, but just to, to make sure the other groups are looking at this and being involved. And, you know, to somebody's point earlier, I apologize, I can't remember who, but talking about the, you know, making sure everybody is aware of,
Yep.
hey, there's drama club after school, or this is what a yearbook is.
Yep.
Or, you know, things like that to where we can kind of be very inclusive of using some of that training that teachers might get for other groups?
Yes.
You know, something to consider.
I always say that equity work is work that we do together. Um, and I think that, you know, in our district here and our community, um, I think we're well ahead of, of, of other communities as well too in terms of coming together and doing the work together. Some of you have experienced that in the coffee and conversations, um, that we've done in, in the past. And we also have the opportunity with Equity Summit as well too, where we partner with community, um, to do presentations, uh, not just having it be, um, you know, um, school district-led. Um, so these are opportunities really for, for communities to come together and train and learn together. And I think that is the way forward, is, is to be able to build these bridges, build these partnerships and, and do the work together.
Sam, I'd like to just, um, I know we talk a lot about the integration piece of achievement and integration. And that's, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, I, I'm making a statement, I'm not sure if it's a hundred percent correct, but the integration piece is also about engagement and welcoming. Simply because, um, you can advertise the drama club all you want, but if there's only one person of color in there, there's going to be an issue of welcoming, right?
Yes.
And, uh, part of that, um, conversation piece of the caring conversations is to actually deal with that.
Yes.
And that's where the staff gets trained also and hears from the situations and what they can do to make it as welcoming as possible and engage the rest of the student population in that endeavor.
Yes.
So that's a correct statement.
That is a correct statement, and I believe that, that adds to, to the, the genius of the caring and committed, um, conversation, um, activity, which I, I wish you would have started here, but we did ta- take it from our partners in Jordan who started that, um, that, that activity there. But it is where you get to engage with students and also learn as well, um, through their experiences, which helps guide our work forward, um, as well as give us an opportunity to, to interact directly with students there and, and showcase and highlight any gaps and understanding that they may have also.
And in relationship to Director Olson's comment, um, you know, we- And in relationship to Director Olson's comment, um, you know, we've had a lot of, and I know our community has come a long way, but we're still seeing the same people in a lot of these engagements where we are talking about equity work. Um, has there been any discussion to bring in a larger audience, people that wouldn't normally show up? Uh, some way to reach them almost in their normal course of their daily lives?
Yeah.
Anything like that?
Well, uh, yep. So last year, during, uh, midway through our coffin conversation, we were, we were, um, looking into that, that piece as well too. And that's why we went from, um, solely a school district-led, um, event to having it be more theme-based. So Rotary ran a theme, um, the Interfaith Group ran a theme as well too, to bring in different people to our, our equity work and, and discussion there. Um, this has also, um, led to why I'm targeting specific, um, community groups also, um, in terms of creating that, that, uh, understanding for them and engaging them also. So there is, we do recognize the need for that. Um, and I, I think this is a great opportunity for us to continue to work and, and bring the community together.
And then the, the last thing I want to talk about is what we haven't really discussed about is the economic disparity that's embedded in here, not necessarily by any one group, but in general. So when ideas come up that talk about, you know, Saturdays or after school or before school, we are talking about an economic issue where parents can't get kids to those events. Um, and like with MinCaps trying to improve that, I'm really grateful we now have the bus service, but it does require kids to dress in business clothes, which are expensive. Um, so how is that being addressed or is that part of the ongoing plan?
Um, well, the, the, the equity work that we're doing here, um, not necessarily related to the Achievement and Integration Grant here, but all, all definitely in the spirit of it and the goals and of it as well, um, is we do have an equity team here that, that are, are working at the district level, an Equity Advisory Committee, but also at the building level, there are equity teams also. Um, an example of some of the work that have, have come up, um, in, in terms of the building equity teams here. Um, the high school has, has done a prom dress drive here to help support students who, who may struggle in terms of getting a prom dress, uh, to go to prom. Um, we've rallied together when students, um, have struggled to, um, to get warm clothing to go to Wolf Ridge, um, and get them that support too. So working very closely with our, our social worker, um, Scott County as well. Um, you know, sadly, I, I was, I was a part of helping a couple of families, um, who recently lost their home here in, in our district. So I know that the economic needs are there, and we've recently brought in Scott County to have this discussion and, and to connect resources so that when we are aware of those situations in the school, we can readily go to, to the correct resources in Scott County to provide that support also. So yes, definitely the economic disparities are growing here or at least have come to attention very strongly within this past year.
Yeah, and I'm happy you brought that up, Mary, because one of the things that I was, the, another district that I spoke to, they have, they do a backpack drive. So for back-to-school, they'll provide backpacks and the supplies for students in need. So we do that as well. Okay.
We have several student groups that do it, parent groups.
Yeah.
And everything else, it's, it's a big issue, and as well as school supplies every year. I know I've gone to Target more than a few times on that one.
Yeah, so I think, I think that's great. And then, um, I just have one last point. So I was reading through the MDE provides a really great document called Frequently Asked Questions. And the one of them, the one that I found very interesting is it says, "Do achievement and integration strategies have to allow participation of all students?" And it said, "Achievement and integration sta- strategies can target participation of specific student groups, but districts must allow and encourage participation of students or family members from all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic backgrounds." And then, "Achievement and integration revenue may not be used for activities that have race-based admission or that have the effect of segregation students by race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic status. This is important, given the purpose of this program, to increase racial and economic integration rather than create or sustain programs that segregate students. Strategies should be designed and implemented to benefit all students regardless of their racial, ethnic, or socioeconomic background rather than meet the needs of a single student group."
And we, and we are there with, with the budget that we put together and, and the plan that we put together too. It's not targeting, uh, for example, um, the example that they put in Frequently Asked Questions too, is we can't use the Achievement and Integration Grant to develop an EL newcomer programming to target, um, students who are new to the country. And had that programming that we create has to be open to all students. Um, again, using caring and committed conversations as an example, again, yeah, um, you know, students of all different racial background, um, ethnic background, cultural background take part in that.
I, I would just add to, um, that specific question, um, years ago, uh, because I began my work in this area back in 99, uh, when the, uh, 35-35 rule was rewritten. But a lot of scrutiny came into play when affinity groups were, um, brought forward. And so I want to be very clear here in our district, I'll, I'll only speak to our district. Um, we, we have, you know, an Asian student group a- at the high school. That's open to any student that can, that can, uh, attend and you want to attend. The focus will be on the learning and the experiences and understandings of the Asian community, but any and all are welcome to attend. And quite frankly, I think quite a few students that are not Asian, um, attend, uh, that specific affinity group, I'm just using that as an example. But that's actually where that, that question, um, was rooted because there was a lot of scrutiny around, well, you're segregating kids. Well, the focus in conversation is around the affinity of that specific culture. So anyone can learn more about that particular culture, the language, that lived experience. Um, and, and it begins to enrichen. So I just want to add that piece to it because I know that was a big, not you, but like that was a big conversation point for when MDE released that FAQ on that particular topic.
Yeah, so many things to say. Uh, first off, Dr. Thomas, thank you so much for bringing this forward and allowing us to have this robust discussion on achievement and integration. Um, I fully support the direction that we're headed in, and this is absolutely our plan. It's not just your plan, Sam. This is our plan. Uh, this is our mission. Our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as productive and contributing members of our ever-changing global community. Uh, that doesn't happen in a vacuum. Can't segregate groups and expect that everybody's going to learn from, uh, what happens in one group or another without having that shared experience or, or learning from one another in those types of situations and in those environments. It's about, uh, fostering a welcoming and, uh, environment where people feel as though they belong. Remove feel, that they actually do belong. Uh, so focusing on all these different areas is indeed the right place to focus energy. I think you gave a presentation, fall of 2021, spring 2022, where we looked at some survey data, and you identified more than 40 different languages spoken in this district.
61.
I was being generous. Yes, yeah, substantial. Uh, it's not just language. It's not like everybody comes with the exact same experiences or shared experiences. It's, they come with their own unique, um, experiences, their lived experiences and cultures surrounding each one of those different languages and whatever their journeys were to arrive here. So focusing on bringing in, uh, specialists and enhancing that effort above what we invested before, uh, lays down that gauntlet and says, "We are in it for the long haul. We are in it to create a welcoming environment where people belong, where people want to visit, where they have a voice and they can see themselves, um, succeed here in Prairie Lake Savage Area Schools." Uh, I can tell you, uh, in my own journey, I didn't see another person that looked like me until I was an adult in graduate school, and it changed my life. I mean, I was a good student all the way through, but it changed my life to have another teacher that had some of those same experiences as I had, who had some of those same travails along the way as I did. It just took my learning and kicked it up tenfold, just having that one person that looked like me, that spoke like me, that had similar experiences to me. So doing that and implementing and creating space at an earlier age is powerful. Thank you.
Is that a good way to move on? Thank you, Director Oak, for all your time and hard work on that. It's an, it's a robust plan with a lot of detail, which I really like to see because then we understand what those student experience is. And after Director Velazquez's words, I have nothing to add. Yes.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to talk about pavement.
Seriously? I know. So, everybody? Sorry, Jim.
Yay, pavement!
I have, I just thank, uh, Sam for warming me up here. Uh, Chair Crosby, School Board members, Dr. Thomas. Um, tonight, I come before you, will, uh, ask me for approval for bids. This is part of our tenure plan. Our goal is, as long as Fish Point is going to be, um, substantially tore up this year, we want to tie a big piece of this project, which is Twin Oaks Parking Lot, along with the Fish Point. We also have another, uh, fairly large product, uh, project at Five Hocks. Again, uh, all the projects are needed. Um, I know Marine, Marine Mullen, and Matt Garrison put a lot of time and effort into this. Um, we worked with Tammy on the budget, and again, this is part of our tenure plan.
Thank you. Any, um...
I can go on.
Sure.
Tell us more about the bituminous.
Uh, which part?
Well, it is important and it is expensive. So do we have questions or comments or thoughts from everybody or anything else you want to highlight or add?
Yeah, so this is just an estimated cost from our engineer. Um, we, we are, our goal is to get out early enough so that we get better, um, bid pricing along with perhaps the, uh, twin, uh, or I'm sorry, the Fish Point project. I mean, that really is why we're trying to get out early.
So from this, do you go out then, you get, you said you get several different bids?
So like last year, we'll package this as a, a project, and then we'll take, um, bids. We'll open up bids here. There's a whole process. We have to be in the paper for two weeks. So, you know, we're, uh, we're well aware of all of that. The first step, however, is to get permission from the school board to, uh, advertise for bids.
Jim, I had a couple of questions. Um, one, we obviously have a 10-year LTFM plan.
Hmm.
As we go through this, are we, we set dollar values in the 10-year LTFM plan. Where does this, are we over that, under that? Um, how did that work out with this initial estimate or what you're expecting to receive?
Um, that's a great question, Mary. So, um, we would always just, based on our experience, put budget numbers on and a little bit of inflation over the last, you know, 10 years of LTFM or eight years, whatever it's been, uh, we're really seeing some, um, inflation. And so we're relying more on, uh, engineers and, and other industry sources to get better numbers. That's why this is at 1.4, I believe, which I think is, is honestly a, a good estimate, and we'd be happy with that.
How does it compare to what we estimated when we put the 10-year plan together for this project?
I'd have to look back, Mary. I'm sorry, I don't have that with me.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm sure it's more.
I, that's what I'm anticipating, and I didn't have a chance because we are combining multiple years because of the Fish Point plan, it looks like. Um, so I'm not quite sure what the net present value would be of that coming back. Okay.
I, I'm, I am going to guess it's more than what we had thought because inflation is high right now.
Right. Um, and then my other question was, since we are working on or planning on putting out a bid to working on the parking lots, at the same time, the road is going to be torn up, how are we going to get the equipment and do the work with the road torn up?
Um, a motivated contractor can work miracles.
Okay.
And, and, you know, we, we have options. We could, we have timing that the road does not have. Um, it, it's a solid plan. We've worked with City, uh, their engineer. You know, we are going to make some tweaks to the, uh, approach for Twin Oaks. Instead of having Hidden Oaks and Twin Oaks at the same spot, we'll move Twin Oaks up a little bit, get more cars into the parking lot for queuing, and try to pull some traffic off of Fish Point.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else?
Jim, do you want to, just for the sake of our community, um, a question that I know will be surfacing is, uh, the timing of these projects and availability of product, product and, you know, supply chain. I know I even joked with you, do we even get asphalt anymore, you know?
Yeah.
So if you could speak to some of that as well, that'd be great.
Sure, thank you. So, uh, that is the one advantage of getting out early. Um, contractors have so much bandwidth to get jobs done. The sooner we're out, the more, um, the further in line we are and the better pricing we're going to get. If that's helpful or if I've answered your question?
So timing, availability of product, we're good, and scope of time, we'd be complete for start of school in fall.
Without a doubt, yeah. I mean, it, it has to happen, just like Fish Point has to happen.
So Jim, am I correct to assume that this is more than what we would normally do, but because of Fish Point, you're saying we're kind of adding a few more projects?
Minor tweaks to this. The big one was Twin Oaks, and that was on this year's plan, and Five Hocks, which also was on this year's plan.
But Homs wasn't, I believe the...
Homs was, yeah, Twin Oaks was.
What about prior, what about the high school? You have an alternative?
Yeah, so we have an, uh, ad alternate there for, if we get good pricing, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, combine it then. Okay.
And how often do you, how often do we repair crack seal?
So crack seal and, so crack seal and chip seal, it's probably once every five years.
So we're, we're on track for, that's where we're at?
Yeah, yep, and we have some major construction in here too, which makes it more. Uh, for an example, the district office is up for crack seal and chip seal. That's $30,000. So it's, it, it's like putting a coat of wax down. So it's a wear coat, and it helps preserve the, um, the base of the asphalt.
And on every single one of these, there's a, um, timing, a year of, uh, scheduled payment activity on there. And then we have a 10-year, uh, LTFM spreadsheet, long-term facilities maintenance spreadsheet that actually shows every so many years when we budget to have this done.
Correct. And we're, and we're trying to get on a cycle now that we're out of, uh, construction. Trying to get more of on a maintenance schedule and, and try to stay ahead of it.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't some of the work that we plan to do at Five Hocks a result of the construction that happened there before? So we knew there was going to be extra wear and tear? Is it, we talked about the, the, the amount of, of repairs that need to be done there?
I think we pushed off to, to make this, yes. And, uh, Five Hocks, the playground is in terrible shape. We're sheeting the whole south side of that building and property right across the playground.
The sidewalk is in pretty bad shape there.
Yep, sidewalks are.
Other question? All right, well, we'll, we'll push ahead to, um, to...
Board meeting?
Yeah.
To the board meeting for, uh, permission. So, thank you.
Thank you. The final item for us tonight, under Oversight of Operations, is to recognize, um, the week of March 5th through 11th, I believe, as School Social Workers Appreciation Week. Um, I know we have a few people at the table that have worked a little bit in that area. I know I studied it for a while and decided I wouldn't pursue it because it was going to break my heart in half. So, um, we will, we will have Mary read the proclamation.
Um, School socer- School Social Workers Appreciation Week, uh, is, the theme is "We Rise", and it's from March 5th to the 11th of 2023. Prairie Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes March 5th through the 11th, 2023, as School Social Workers Appreciation Week. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas the importance of school social work through the inclusion of school social work programs and services has been recognized in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965 and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Whereas school social workers are exceptionally skilled in providing services to students who face serious challenges to school success, including disability, poverty, discrimination, abuse, neglect, mental illness, homelessness, bullying, familial stressors, and other barriers to learning. Whereas school social workers are needed more now than any, than at any time in recent memory. Whereas school social workers maintain knowledge of school culture and school climate, which are necessary for, and for responsible school safety planning. Whereas school social workers serve as vital members of a school's education team, playing a central role in creating... a central role in creating partnerships between the home, school, and community to ensure student academic success. Therefore, the Prior Lake Savage, PLSAS Board of Education does hereby proclaim the week of March 5th through 11th, 2023, as School Social Workers Week in recognition of the contributions social workers make in the lives of students.
Thank you, yeah. And Ms. Chuka will share a few words, and if I may, I'll share a few as well. So, in 1998, I started my career with St. Paul Public Schools as a school-based social worker. And yet, I've broken my heart a few times over my years of service. But I will say that social workers and many related service professionals, counselors, psychs, social workers, you all are providing a crucial level of support to allowing our students to be successful in our schools every single day. And whether it's, you know, family issues, community issues, or just general life issues, oftentimes, you are that individual staff member that has a really close and very unique bond with our students. And so, having walked in your shoes for many, many years, I can't thank you enough for the work that you do for our students here in PLSAS. So, happy Social Work Week to those of you, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Chuka.
Well, I don't even know how to follow that. Well, we have 12 social workers here in our district providing support to our students, and they do take on a lion's share of work, connecting the community and family and school all together. So, I do want to express my appreciation for all that they do. I mean, they work across general education, special education, and they bring everything in the community, and they bring it all together, and are really, I'm grateful for them every day. So, just wanted to share that, and I won't go on anymore because Dr. Thomas said it so well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely, big recognition, now more than ever. Okay, we will move on to board governance policy. Tonight, we're going to do a board policy review for Policy 516, which involves student medication. We have Health Services Coordinator Kate Kyle here. She'll introduce some changes and some potential discussion around other changes as well.
Yeah. So, the reason I'm here today is there is a new Minnesota State statute that we have to ask parents if their child takes a controlled medication that we're going to be giving in school. And then, we also needed to have a policy for unclaimed medication. All of this, we were already doing. It was a procedure that we were following. We just didn't have it as part of the medication policy, so we've added it now. And it's added under J, just soliciting feedback from parents if their child is getting a controlled substance. And then, in letter N, our procedure for regarding unclaimed medication that's left in the health office and how we handle that. Are there any questions? Go ahead, Mary.
For the unclaimed medication, is there a time limit that we say we're going to keep it? Because I didn't see it in there.
So, typically, we reach out to parents like the last month of school or so, kind of when they're bringing in their final refills, and just let them know school is ending. So, a lot of our controlled substances are, you know, very closely counted, and so, parents will only send that many medications, you know, left when we ask for that final refill. And then, as the date gets closer to the end of the school year, we send an email, and then if we haven't heard from a parent, we call again. If they're able to, if we're able to reach them and set up a time, you know, after school hours, we certainly do. If we don't hear from the families and give them, you know, I would say probably a week after school ends, then we just dispose of that medication, and I arrange that in the summer.
Is that memorialized anywhere to let parents know that we're going to, you know, you have so many times we reach out?
It's in that letter that we send at the end of the year. We kind of give them a timeframe. I would say, you know, less than one student has medication left at the end of the year, and a lot of times, it's an expired med, so the parents are like, it's not even worth me coming in. So, then we get rid of it. Less frequently, it's that controlled medication, just because it is so, parents only get so much, and so, they're, you know, really want to make sure that they pick that up. They make it a priority.
And we do have a procedure for disposal, correct?
We do have a procedure for disposal. So, if it is a non-controlled medication, we do take it to the box. And if it's a controlled medicine, then our savage schools, our savage school resource officer picks them up, and he turns on, or she turns on her camera, and we record it. And if it's Prior Lake, we use our SRO for Prior Lake.
Thank you.
I have a question about L, point L.
Okay.
It says, "Parent/ legal guardian for students 18 years old or older is the student." And the only, like, does that fall under Minnesota State statute? And the reason I'm asking is recently, there was a situation where there was an 18-year-old student under medical care in a hospital facility, but because they still fell under the parent's legal guardianship, there was different rights, because you're still considered the legal guardian. So, that, I'm just wondering, here, it's basically saying that if your student is 18 years or older, they are considered the legal guardian of themselves?
For medical, correct.
But I'm just saying, is that, does that fall under Minnesota State statute, do you know?
Yes, yes, it does. And that's actually been in our policy for many, many years.
Okay.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'd like to foreshadow that I might be here again. We just received word that Minnesota Department of Health is creating a toolkit with regard to Narcan. And so, I've had an opportunity to meet with Steve Remler Network to gain some further information, also talked with our school resource officers, and they are fully in support of us having Narcan in our schools. It would just be at the secondary level, you know, and talking with any first responder, they said, you know, the sooner you can get it to a student, the better. So, it's great that the school resource officer has that medication, but really, it's about getting it to the student quick. So, they would support that. So, I'm just waiting, and they said mid-March, they're going to be rolling out a school toolkit, but they want to make sure that schools are having conversations now, because it will take a while to get it into policy. And so, I just wanted to talk about that and see if you had any questions or concerns right now with regard to Narcan in schools.
I actually wondered if that was an example of what would go under K for the exceptions?
So, the Narcan actually will go into its own policy.
Okay.
It's called overdose medication. It's, it will be 516.5, so it'll be its own policy.
And I believe today, we got communication from MSBA on what that policy looks like. So, I know it potentially looks like, I should say, the recommendation.
Mm-hmm. But that wouldn't fall under one or two under K in terms of emergency health procedures?
It potentially could, but it will have its own standalone policy-
Okay.
...because of the significance of that support and needing a separate policy. But yes, it technically could meet those criteria.
Okay. And would we make a note in here or something in this policy?
We would cross-reference Policy 516.5-
Okay, yep.
...as a companion piece to this, so we wouldn't explicitly state it here. And, you know, I was sharing with Kate and others, and just for the board and our community, you know, I have unfortunately had to be in a situation where we administered, you know, up to six sprays of Narcan to save a young man's life at a previous high school. And it is, it is the scariest thing I think I've ever experienced. And so, to have a policy that would support the life of our students in an emergency situation, I think is absolutely critical. And so, as we get the latest iteration from MSBA, I'll just, you know, in advance, really ask the board to consider that as a policy adoption, given literally the life and death moments of seconds to save some of our young people who are unfortunately in that, in that space. So.
Will we be having training for staff on this as part of the procedure?
Yep. So, the Steve Remler Network will come out free of charge. They also will give the school Narcan free of charge, so that we can do that, yes.
And Kate, this would also, I'm sorry, this would also be limited in terms of who administers in a school? Can you speak to that as well?
Yes. So, we do have MERT teams, so medical response teams within the schools, but the nurses or the health aide would be responsible for administering it. However, I would want the whole team to kind of understand what's going on and to have some training around it. But the medication would be housed in the health office, so the health aide would be the one that would administer that medication.
What if they're not there that day? Or, I mean, is there, are there backups to that?
We don't ever not staff the health office. So, yep, there's always, there's always someone in the health office. So, sometimes, that's me, because we're short-staffed, but there's always a trained medical person within our buildings.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? Great. Well, we look forward to seeing you again.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. We have no first reading of policies. We have a second reading of policy, which is Policy 515, Protection and Privacy of Student There was, again, some minor language changes. We've seen it several times. We'll be approving it presumably at the next board meeting. So, any additional thoughts from any directors on that one? Superintendent Relations, I believe you have an update for us?
Yeah, just real quickly, I wanted to mention that starting today through March 3rd, it is also Public Schools Recognition Week. And I felt a bit remiss for us not to acknowledge the fact that we are a public school system. And I would say, public education truly is the bedrock of this country. I think it's the one institution that most of us, until at least that compensatory age of 16 or so, have to go through. And it really is, you know, preparing, you know, individuals for great citizenship and contributions to this world. So, I just want to thank all of you for your dedication and commitment to public education, to our community, for choosing PLSAS, the best district. And just really thank, you know, just our entire country for investing in public education, and how important of a foundational block that is for so many of us in this country. So, just want to give acknowledgement to that.
Thank you. And informational items, did-
I do, yeah. I'm actually going to ask our interim director, Emily Herman, to speak to a possible hiring event for our community to participate in.
Thank you so much, Dr. Thomas. Members of the board and community, I wanted to highlight a exciting new opportunity that Teachers On Call is moving forward with. They had some really great success with the virtual hiring event for certified substitutes. So, they're offering another one next week, March 8th. So, I just encourage everybody to check out our social media page to find out more information. If you're interested in becoming a substitute teacher in our district, or you know somebody in your network, please share all this information. Great opportunity to get in our schools and support the daily learning of our students. So, just wanted to call attention to that for all of our community to check out. Thank you.
And that's March 8th?
March 8th, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and the link and information is on our social media accounts.
Thank you. That's a great idea. Thanks for that update. We have no other updates, so we will move on to public forums. So, at our study sessions, we do public forum at the end of our agenda. Tonight, we do have one speaker, and our speaker knows and understands the public forum rules, so I don't need to read them tonight. And our speaker is Bill Markert.
Can you hear me? Good evening. I respectfully ask this school district, take down the racism and hate-related posters such as "N racism, be the change," and erase hate from the schools, which have been up for more than a year now. I and many parents in our community believe these posters conjure up nothing but negative feelings among students. They don't promote positivity nor unity. How are children supposed to be the change when they are not racist, nor control the actions of others? If the district wants to put up posters, why can't they be ones that promote positive messages depicting unity, cooperation, respect, and tolerance? Seeing a poster in your face daily that at first, students are racist, and asking them to be the change, in my opinion, is borderline abusive. I speak for many parents who are asking the district to please take these down. We've had them up for more than a year now. Please take them down. Secondly, there are many signs and video messages in our schools today that show the message, "Everyone is welcome." Since our district has always welcomed any student wanting to attend our schools, I'm not quite sure why we need to post that message as much as we do, but as I walk the halls or look at the video boards, it's constant. The message is fine. What I find concerning is that every single one of the "everyone is welcome" signs has a rainbow background. The rainbow has been a symbol for gay and lesbian pride since the 70s. The district constantly states it wants to, its schools to be inclusive. Yet, when you see all these rainbow-imagined "everyone is welcome" signs, many students that don't share gay or lesbian pride feel excluded from the welcome message, because the message is directed to only one set of students. Some might even consider that "everyone is welcome" message with a rainbow background a convenient way to push a certain ideology on children. I'm asking the district at least consider replacing the "everyone is welcome" rainbow imagery with signs that depict symbols reflecting all students, not just a subset of students. District leadership speaks so often of being inclusive to all students, and using the term "all" means all. If that's the case, then let's depict symbols inclusive of all students. Unite our school community through the use of our school mascots, our school mottos, or something else that unifies us. Parents I speak with are tired of having politically-charged symbols and practices thrown in their children's faces. There are other examples I could get into tonight, of posters and apparel that district employees wear that are not inclusive to all students, and some that promote politically-charged activism. Please stop allowing symbols and imagies to be used in our schools or worn by district employees if they only reflect the passions of a subset of student body and are discriminatory to the other students and district employees who may not share those same passions. Thank you. Thank you for letting me go over to, I think I want to-
Thank you. We will adjourn our study session and transition to an open meeting. Should we take a short recess? Let's do that. Okay, we'll be back in like five minutes. Thank you. I'd like to call this business meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Everyone is here in attendance tonight. On our agenda tonight, we have some business items to consider, and I need a motion to approve by Director Burnick, and a second-
Second.
-by Director Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. So, our business items tonight, the first is the approval of the 2023 PLSAS legislative platform. Do I have a motion to approve?
So may.
So, Director Velezquez, and seconded by Director Bullion. So, we, in the last meeting, this was brought forward. We had some good discussion around it. Are there any, any other things we need to address, or questions directors have? Are we ready to approve? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Earlier tonight, we heard from Mr. Jiao Wu about the permission to advertise for bids for pavement for the summer. Can I get a motion to approve to advertise for bids?
So may.
By Director Olstad, seconded by Director Velezquez. Any additional questions, concerns? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. We also have the 22, 24- We also have the 2224 health aide settlement. It's in our packet with all the details. We are looking to approve this. Do I have a motion?
So made.
By Director Atkinson and a second.
Second.
By Director Burnick. Any other questions for Director Herman or any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the 2224 health aide settlement?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. And lastly, we have the 2224 Kids Company Site Lead Settlement. Again, the detail is in your board packet. Do I have a motion to approve this?
So made.
By Director Velezquez, a second.
Second.
By Director France. Any additional questions or discussion from board directors or from our executive director? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. That concludes our agenda and I need a motion to adjourn.
So made.
By Director Bullion and a second.
Second.
By Director Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, 7-0 in favor. Thank you. That concludes our business meeting.